The Monday, February 26, 2024 meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
All board members are present and accounted for, ma'am.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we have the presentation portion of the meeting with Dr. Ferris, I believe. Ferris.
Thank you. Wow, a little louder tonight.
You want to calm that down?
Yeah, usually I have to talk loud. On behalf of Carmel High School staff and administration, it is my honor to be here tonight to recognize a very special group of educators and students. On January 20th, the CHS Theater and Film Department was awarded the Indiana State Thesbian Conference State Championship for their performance of A Monster Calls. A Monster Calls is a play adaptation of the award-winning novel by Peter Hett Ness. And in addition to the state championship performance, the students have presented it at the Indie Fringe Festival and at Carmel High School. The production was under the direction of CHS Theater teacher Maggie Cassidy and the technical direction of Auditorium Director Andrew Okerson. I would like to bring up Maggie and Andrew to give you a little more information about the students' accomplishments and to introduce the 22 actors and technical crew members who brought the production to life. So Maggie and Andrew, come on up.
Thank you, Dr. Ferris. Thank you, Dr. Bearstford, Dr. O'Stryke, Dr. Dudley, Dr. McMichael, and Mr. McMichael, and all the school board members for recognizing the accomplishments of the cast and crew of A Monster Calls. At the end of the 2022-23 school year, I chose our play for the Indie Fringe in competition performances, A Monster Calls. It's about a boy dealing with his mother's cancer diagnosis. In the night, he's visited by a monster in the form of a Y tree. The monster helps Connor work through his grief. The students auditioned in May and were tasked with line memorization and character development over the summer. We began rehearsals in July. In three weeks, we got this monster of a show on its feet. The actors learned their blocking, choreography, stilt walking, and studied the text of the play. The tech team interwove music cues, light cues, projection, and hanging ropes seamlessly into the production. In late August, we performed at the Indie Fringe Festival in downtown Indianapolis to teary eyes and rave reviews. We put rehearsals on hold for a few months, and in November, we prepped to take our play to the regional thespian competition at Noblesville High School. One of the major changes we had to make in the show from Indie Fringe to competition was how we were going to hang our ropes. At the Indie Fringe building, we hung them from the rafters, but we could not do that at Noblesville High School. So, our tech director, Mr. Okerson, won the day when he proposed a 13-by-33-foot truss to hang the ropes. The truss took all hands to assemble and raise, but our tech students made it look easy. We did well at regionals and placed second among seven other schools. This allowed us to advance to state. Only the first and second-place winners can advance to state. The state competition took place in mid-January. The actors worked tirelessly to make sure each word uttered onstage was loud, crisp, and clear. They worked to synchronize all of the choreography so the ensemble could move as one, and they worked hard for each other, worked hard to tell the beautiful story of Connor, and worked hard towards the goal of placing first at state. Their hard work paid off, and they placed first at the state conference, among 11 other schools, so 12 schools altogether competing. They also won an award for best ensemble, recognizing the talents of all the actors. And the tech team was awarded Best Stage Manager and Best Tech from Indiana West Lane University, the school hosting the event, for their work ethic, positive attitude, and talents behind the scenes. So, I'm super proud of these students and honored to see them recognized tonight. All right, I will read off your names, and if you want to come up here and you want them all to stand here in the front? Okay, great. Eden Hammond, Juliette Mallory, Sophia Mallory, Ella Glawaki, Bailey Ailer, Gabby Bradley, Dee Dee Nawoffo, Luke Boyce, Gavin Stewart, Sam Teak, Will Swigert. Should I slow down? Sorry. Gabby Bradley. All right, Jack Kennedy, Paige Murray, Allison Miller, Olak Marmuta, Jordy Beach, Olivia Conn's, Caitlin Kennedy, Emily Kennedy, Lauren Beal, Nora Whitesett, Jaden Hignower, Jessica G., and Aleni Fingerhut.
And since it is a school night, we're just going to take a few minutes break, and if you want to go ahead and leave and get home, you are more than welcome.
Hey, before you guys leave, I wanted you to know that I was going to brag about the show choir. I got to go, I was at Franklin Central, and it was amazing and crazy good. So, how many guys are in that show choir? Hands up in the air. You guys blew it up. It was fantastic. And back there in the back, Gabby did "Rollin' on the River" that about brought the roof down. It was crazy. So, congratulations to you guys. I wanted to throw that out before you got out the door.
But we do not have anyone signed up for public comment this evening. After that, we have the consent part of our agenda. Tonight consent includes the Personnel Report, Claims, Payroll, Gift Applications, and the January 8, January 22, and February 5 school board minutes. Just as a reminder for anybody, the consent, this part of our agenda, is the section where we have routine items kind of all grouped together so that we can consider them more efficiently as opposed to individual motions. So, again, it typically includes these kinds of things like the report, payroll, and those sorts of items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? We will now vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before you jump off, Dr. O'Stryke over here is going to mention two people that were on our consent agenda and our personnel report who are retiring. And we thought just take a minute and let him tell you just a little bit about those two, two longtime employees here in Carmel Clay Schools and pretty special.
Thank you, Dr. Bearstford, President Coquelin, and members of the board. We'll start off with Andy Cook, who will retire at the end of this school year with 38 years of teaching experience and 30 of those with Carmel Clay Schools. After completing his student teaching at Carmel High School, Andy taught for three years in Frederick County, Maryland, before returning to CHS as an instrumental music teacher. Andy is currently an Associate Director of Bands at Carmel High School. He is the only band director at Carmel High School that has been a part of every ISMA State Marching Band title and every Bands of America Grand National Championships in the history of the Carmel Marching Band. Andy is a people person. He builds great relationships with his colleagues, students, parents, and community. And finally, a little bit of a fun fact, according to the other band directors, Andy has owned more cars than all the other band directors combined during his time at Carmel High School. So, congratulations to Andy Cook. And also, Karina Mercer will retire at the end of this school year with 32 years of teaching experience, all with Carmel Clay Schools. Karina started her career with Carmel Clay Schools as a second-grade student at Woodbrook Elementary School. Karina credits several of her teachers and administrators through the years with inspiring her to pursue a career in teaching. Also worth noting, she completed her cadet teaching and student teaching, working side by side with who would become her future father-in-law, former Collegewood PE teacher, Harold Mercer. So, Karina, back in the day, had the perfect pipeline that we dream of here in Carmel, being a student, a teacher, a cadet teacher, going to college, doing their student teaching in Carmel, and then coming back to teach with us for 32 years. Also to note, Karina was hired as the first PE teacher at Smoky Row Elementary School when it opened its doors in the fall of 1992 and has remained in that position for the past 32 years. So, in the history of Smoky Row Elementary School, we've only had one physical education teacher, and that is Mrs. Mercer, who will be retiring at the end of this school year. We look forward to celebrating both Mrs. Mercer and Mr. Cook at our April 15 board meeting at Clay Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you for that background, and thank you again, Mr. Cook and Ms. Mercer, for your service to our school. The next part of our meeting is our action items, and our first action item this evening is the adoption of Policy 5414, Therapy Dogs. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So, this evening, I bring before the board a recommendation to adopt the changes in Policy 5414, Therapy Dogs. The one change that I shared with you at our last regular meeting was that in the policy, we're putting in the information that companion animals are not permitted on corporation property or corporation-sponsored events, because we have had an issue in the past where pets have been brought on during recess or pets have been brought on during events, and we actually did have one person that was bit by one of these companion animals. So, we're clarifying that in the policy.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of the changes to Policy 5414, Therapy Dogs? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question about the word companion. Is that a technical term, or that just means non-therapy?
That would be the non-therapy dogs.
Is that the best word for the public to know as opposed to general pets or something like that?
I mean, that is something, this recommendation was brought by Mr. Woodward, our safety expert, and he shared that wording. Now, that is something we can certainly go back if you would like us to.
Okay, because isn't there another certification under therapy that has something that sounds slightly like that?
I think Dr. Bearstford can speak to that.
I'm the dog guy. No, there's companion, the term companion is pretty much synonymous with pets. So, these aren't therapy dogs, they're not service dogs, they're not like, in my case, Jim Dandy is, a facility dog. There's different levels of dogs based on what they can do, but companion and pets are pretty much the same, same piece.
We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Our next action item is the bid awards for the asphalt paving renovations for various elementary schools. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is a recommendation to the Howard Companies for Asphalt Paving and Seal Coating in the amount of $804,075. This is a part of our bond projects, and each of these schools has, we're doing paving or seal coating and striping, but there's additional work that's included in the total project. All of it's outside, I believe, and such things as we will be upgrading some of the landscaping at each of these sites and possibly the lighting, like the parking outside lighting.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the bid awards for the asphalt paving renovations for various elementary schools?
So moved.
May I have a second? Any discussion?
Just to point a clarification, Roger and I had a little bit of discussion earlier about it, and this is an approved budget line item, we're just approving the bids.
Yes.
And it is under what we had budgeted.
Yes, we have, I think, 2.5 million total budget for four elementary schools, and this is, so this is 800,000 of that total. So, we're well within the budget and the estimate.
Thank you.
We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Our next action item is the change orders for the Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is an add change order in the amount of $41,407. As noted, it's for the Activity Center, which required some additional structural steel to reinforce some of the roof framing.
May I have a motion to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center?
So moved.
And a second? Any discussion? Katie.
Mine's really just a comment. I think it's very, I'm so excited for the building itself, and I think it's really exciting as you drive down Keystone, and you're like, what is that? And we know what it is. I think it's very, it's going to be so incredibly beneficial to our high school students and our marching band, as we talked a little bit. I know that they're very anxious for it, so I just want to say that I'm excited for it, and the progress is looking really good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have another action item. This is the change orders for the Carmel High Naudatorium addition and existing nautatorium renovations. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. I like this one and maybe the next two better. They're DDEC change orders, and this is for several things that are detailed in your report. Credits back on contracts, and it's in the total amount of $22,259.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School Nautatorium addition and existing nautatorium renovations? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our next action item is the change orders for the Carmel High Performing Arts Center addition and renovations. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is also a DDEC change order in the amount of $18,429.84. It's unused allowances for this contractor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center addition and renovations? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our next action item is the change orders for the Stadium Support Building. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is also a DDEC change order in the amount of $26,419.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School Stadium Support Building? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have another action item this evening. It is the resolution to establish a legal fee reporting threshold. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is a new requirement that was put in place last year, and it essentially requires that the board set a threshold amount at which legal fees would be reported to the board. And so, that involves, we've identified categories as well as an amount, and then the frequency in what we have suggested. And it really is a suggestion, this is absolutely a board issue. And the frequency, and so in this case, the frequency is per month, and we've suggested $10,000 per category, and our intent would be, we will, I think the superintendent plans to share with the board president just as a part of the, prior to the board meetings and regardless of the amount, but certainly, and then if it's over the threshold, of course, it would be shared with the entire board. So, to put this in perspective, about a $275 million a year expenses, our legal fees, not to minimize them at all, but I do want to put in the context that they run about $100,000 or $125,000 a year. And now, you can have, you know, one lawsuit that can change all that, but we've been fairly fortunate, and in recent years, we have virtually no legal expenses for labor relations, and that wasn't always the case. And so, we're spending, you know, much less in that area than we have in some previous years.
Thank you for that explanation. May I have a motion to approve the resolution to establish a legal fee reporting threshold? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a question, trying to understand the amount more than anything. So, this is a new law that's coming in, so imposed that we have some kind of an understanding between the board and administration that when there's some legal fees.
Yes.
It's kind of a reporting level, as I understand it.
Exactly.
We've got a number of $10,000 in a month on a given category, of which there are seven categories.
Yes.
Do you know roughly, I know legal fees are expensive, but can you tell me roughly how much per hour we might see?
Depends on the lawyer that we're dealing with. With Church, Church &amp; Hill, for example, a partner would be at a higher rate than an associate and so forth, but I can approximate that, I believe that the highest amount for like a partner is somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think it's less than $400, which, if you know much about legal fees, that there are a lot of attorneys that would be much more than that, and then it goes down from there. So, our monthly expenses, they vary certainly, but it's not unusual, they'll be $7,000, $8,000 maybe. And then, you know, there could be some that would be higher than that. Now, that does not include, there's two other, so that's with, and I'm talking about Church, Church &amp; Hill, which is the board's counsel. When we sell bond issues, there's bond counsel and that, so if we sell a bond issue in, you know, this year, which we did, then we'll have bond attorney fees, and we would be sharing those as well. And that could be, depending on the size of the bond, but that could be $40,000 or $50,000. And then we'll have a little bit, we occasionally have used other law firms, for example, but they're really minor as compared, most of our legal expenses are with Church.
Katie?
I just want to make note, mainly for the publics, that the board has provided information every month in our claims for legal fees. This is just an additional notification.
It is, but it was correctly pointed out that they, all the payments are in the claims, but there's 1,000 or 2,000 claims. And so, if you wanted, if you wanted specific information about attorneys, be far advised just to call me, rather than try to go through the claims. But, and in this particular, you know, this wasn't something that, you know, the local administration came up with, it became state law through, and my guess is, I wouldn't be surprised there was some, a lot of the laws ended up, somebody did something that somebody didn't like, and so, you know, we put it in legislation. And so, I, in this district, as long as I've been here, if we have a significant legal issue, it's always been discussed with the board, and depending on the circumstances, it might be in an executive session, to the extent that's appropriate. But, so, we've not set an amount, but just as a practical matter, this district's always shared, if there's, you know, meaningful type, because usually it's not so much the cost of the lawyer, it's whatever the litigation is. And we could have litigation that the lawyer is one cost, but you could, if you kind of lost or whatever, you could, it could cost a lot. So, that's what's being shared, not just the attorney fees.
And I'll just note, I appreciate in my years on the board, you, Roger, Dr. B., for sharing. You guys have been very transparent with what's going on and the cost upfront and really asking for our input on those things, so thank you for that.
Greg?
Yeah, I would, just to comment on the monthly dockets that we see, the accounts payable documents, as they, as you pointed out, it's, they get intermingled in amongst 1,000 or 2,000 entries, and they're not coded as legal, they're just coded as a service, so they blend in, unless you know the law firm's names, you wouldn't, they don't jump out at you.
That's right.
So, I would personally rather see a lower amount, just to pick a number, I would say more like 5,000. If we're paying up to $400 an hour, that would be about 25 hours worth of work a month or more, if it was a lower cost, and it's, you know, that would be a kind of a significant amount, so I would, I would just recommend a lower number, like 5,000 or something. That's what I would prefer.
And there's not a right or wrong with this. This is just literally whatever the board is comfortable with and would like.
If it became annoying or it seemed like it was unnecessary, we could always raise it.
You could, yes.
I would, you know, try it out, just to see, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Just echoing a little bit what Katie was talking about, it's, it sounds, the number amount is really not as, have as much information as the situation that's occurring. And so, it has seemed that, over the two years I've been on the board, the influx of information that you provide, all of you, of our administrative team, when there is a serious issue or even just something that we need to be aware of so that we can be transparent with the community, you've always been upfront with that. So, while that's an open discussion as to the amount, it's really the situation that's more important than that amount. But thank you very much for all your help.
Does anyone else have any input as to the amount? Louise?
So, it's been motioned and seconded, so we'll need to take a vote on this, and if the vote, if it fails, then we'll
So it's been motioned and seconded, so we'll need to take a vote on this. And if the vote, if it fails, then we can do another motion. But we'll need to finish this one first.
Can I have a motion to, or, well, now we're gonna, we're gonna take a vote. I already did the motion. Can I, can we take a vote to see if we are going to approve this resolution to establish the legal fees? All in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anyone opposed? Opposed? Our next action item is the year-end budget appropriation transfer. Again, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is something we do annually. As the boards are aware, we build a budget in the summer and then that budget is finally concluded about eighteen months later. And so there are things that change. Sometimes when we build the budget, we, we may not know the amount of funding that we're going to receive. We may just have estimates. When, when we have a two-year biennium, when we get a new formula, that helps, but sometimes that, before we get to the next year, if legislature hadn't finished the process, then we're estimating a lot of things. And so, so by the end of the, of the process, end of the budget year, we're not permitted to have accounts in the, in the, in the negative. We're certainly not permitted to have a fund in the negative. And so, so we don't get to the negative fund, but we do have accounts that will be, have excess appropriation and other accounts that don't have enough. And so that's what this process is doing. So if you look at each fund, the education fund, for example, we increased accounts, certain accounts that are listed, a million dollars, and then we decreased other accounts, a million dollars. So it's a balancing process. It's not, this isn't having anything to do with how much money we're spending. It does indirectly, but I mean, it's, the additional appropriation that you approved in November, that's additional money that we'll spend beyond what the original budget was established at. This is kind of a bookkeeping requirement so that we don't close the books with any account in the red. And then you can see it's for three funds, I think.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the year-end budget appropriation transfer?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, Greg, you asked some great questions and I appreciated it earlier. And so to reiterate what Mr. McMichael said, that this is a bookkeeping, an annual bookkeeping, and there's no financial impact to this particular vote.
There is not. I would say that this, the amounts here are not, are larger than typical because this past year, we had even more change than we, than we have in many years. One being, you'll recall, we discussed quite a bit, the assessed value, for example, and how that impacted the revenue coming in with our referendum fund. And, and so, and you'll see that, you'll see changes, you know, two, like two and a half million dollars in the referendum fund. Most of that was in November, the board approved one point eight million dollars of additional appropriation in the referendum fund. And when we put that in, we put it in like the eleven-thousandth account, because from our perspective, it doesn't matter because we know we're going to do this. But all of that basically was, is being moved from the eleven thousands to the twenty-six thousand. And one of the great questions that I, I would like to share publicly is that conversation because we also, you may recall, we had, when we were doing the new referendum, we had a conversation about our practice of, of paying operational expenses out of the referendum fund rather than doing a transfer to the operations fund. And so in twenty-three, we were still doing that. We will not be doing that in twenty-four because it turned out it was confusing. And the statute changed. We now, we're required to say what we're going to use the referendum for and we've always used it primarily for instructional salaries, but, but if you looked at the books, you can see here, it's two and a half million dollars for operations. And again, the naming is, what that really is, is custodians or utilities. But this, this is the state descriptor for that account number. And so, so at any rate, so, so most of the, the referendum increases and so forth had to do with that additional appropriation, which as you'll recall, that additional money for that fund is what really kept us from having to have difficult discussions about cutbacks because we had lost about the same amount of money through the, through the formula because of declining enrollment over the last three years. This year, fortunately, it went, it ticked up a little bit, so we think we're past that.
Thank you and thank you for asking.
And for those of you in the public, when he says twelve hundred and nine thousand, those are account numbers.
Yeah, sorry.
And, you know, the state puts the numbers out there and then where everything's under control, the state. So you start flying into that stuff, Roger, and we don't speak that language, so you gotta do some translation.
Try to keep it simple.
Okay.
Greg?
Yeah, just one more question slash comment. So there's been a migration, isn't it correct to say, at the state level, telling us how to have, we used to have a general fund, then it split into an operations and education?
Well, we used to have a general fund and that changed to an education fund, but when it did, the use of the education fund, as the name implies, is, is much more narrow than it was for the general fund. So in the general fund, we spent about, on today's budget, about seventeen million dollars of operational expenses, everything from utilities to custodians. And, and most of us up here that are, that work in this building. And so the, the education fund is really focused on more or less direct classroom, in the school kind of expenses. And so, but when that change occurred, and they did create the operations fund and combined other, three other funds, transportation and so forth. But when that change occurred, the revenue coming in, what's now the education fund, essentially is the same as it was when it was the general fund. In other words, it's got the seventeen million in there. And, and so if we didn't have a referendum fund, the only choice we would have is to pay those expenses out of the operations fund, which again, that's what we'll do in twenty-four. But then we, but the seventeen million of revenue also has to follow it to give us money to pay the seven, the operational expenses. And so, so that was a major shift. Again, that's kind of a bookkeeping issue. It didn't affect, you know, how much we're spending and so forth, but it's like where you can code it for and each fund has a specific purpose that, and it's, and it's prescribed by law as to what you could use, you know, each fund for.
You want me to interpret that? There's like five buckets of finance and the state said, no, we don't want five buckets. We want two buckets. And so it came to education, operations, and so it, it's really, you know, the state wanting, you know, to change kind of what the names and the different pieces of it. But those expenses are still, happen and we still have to pay for the expenses. And it just depends on what bucket you're in. So there's your interpretation.
So, yeah, so my question of my comment thing was that, this generated, this transition of this bookkeeping thing has generated a lot of questions, you know, a lot from me particularly, trying to understand it. Is it safe to say then, as we enter in the twenty-twenty-four accounting year, we won't see these kinds of adjustments and movements around? So it should be a...
Well, you're saying a couple of things. Interestingly, we didn't have questions for the first four years that we did what we, what we had been doing in terms of making a decision to pay these operational expenses out of the referendum fund because it continues to have a broader definition. But we did have the questions and I suspect it came about as we proposed to renew the referent, or, yeah, to renew the rate and so forth. So, so in hindsight, I wasn't surprised by that because now people are, you know, that's, we brought that topic up really. So, so, so that's one thing, but then, as I said, we, in going forward, the bookkeeping will show, but virtually all the money in the referendum fund is spent on teachers' hours. It's just simpler. And at the same time then, as I said a minute ago, this is a process that we always go through every year, but typically the, the amounts aren't as large because we had certain changes in twenty-three that were not kind of typical.
Thank you.
So it will happen again because we'll have the end of the year next year.
Right.
And, and so the expenses all have to be balanced and by state law, we can't have anything in the red.
Right.
Thank you.
We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
Good bucket story.
We have one more action item and that is the carry forward of operations fund accounts. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. These are accounts in the operation fund, as the name suggests, that we, we want to carry forward. We didn't use all the, all the appropriation and therefore the money that's behind that appropriation. And so, so we have certain select accounts that we, and these are it, that we are proposing that we would carry forward. And a school, for example, if they, they may have any, or technology will have an account. And rather than, than, you know, have these accounts go to zero and then basically we just appropriate more the next year. It's, it's just simpler to carry it forward because there, it's not a, if it was a project in the operations fund, like we were repairing something and had money left over, you know, but the, but the, but the project, whatever it is, is is complete, then we, we wouldn't be carrying it forward. But these are accounts that, that whoever's responsible for them has, has that account, like year in and year out. And they'll get a new budget or they got a new budget in January and this is like what was remaining. So if it's a school, for example, they, we we allow them to carry forward one year, not like four or five years or something, so. But it gives them, gives them the, the upcoming year an opportunity. And sometimes they'll kind of save up if they needed something and so they didn't use it this year, but then they plan to use it all next year. So it's, again, another somewhat routine process that we go through.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the carry forward of operation fund accounts? May I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of that, Mr. McMichael. That was a lot. Our next agenda item is the discussion item and the new course, or the discussion of the new course proposal. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening I am bringing, it's actually a modification of a course that we currently have. This is, this course is named Business Marketing and Entrepreneurship Special Topics. So at the, at Carmel High School, we have the Carmel Cafe and Market, which our students, it's part of a course. They actually are managers in the Carmel Cafe. This course is the first semester where it's, where they're doing classroom learning about the management of it, setting goals, inventory, ordering, all of those pieces with the inventory, and they do it concurrently with managing the cafe. And students may manage the cafe for one semester, two semesters, up to four semesters. But when they were taking the class, the management class, they could only get up to four credit hours for that. And this is in addition to that. So we wanted, we needed to name it Special Topics. The students will take this course plus the management course for the students that are in the, in these courses. And so we needed to rename the course so that they could also get credit for the classroom learning part of it. And then they have the actual hands-on learning when they're actually in the management. That's the other part of that course. And so this is just a change in that course title for that. The students will be doing the same things that they're doing now and they'll take it concurrently with the other course.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Dr. Dudley?
Not necessarily a question, but I know how much my daughter enjoyed being a manager on the cafe and how influential it is. I mean, she actually shared with me some business ventures that she has an idea for now. So anytime we can encourage our students to be entrepreneurs and strong business leaders, I support that. So thank you.
I just had a question. Is this part of one of the pathways, like a business?
So this, many of the students are in the pathways, the business management pathway, but it's typically they are in that, but this is not one of the pathways, like the principals' courses or the A and B, but typically most of these students are in that pathway.
Thank you.
How many students are managers in a given year? Good question. I would have to get back with you. Because they run it throughout this school day, so they have different periods that they're managers. I'm not sure how many exactly we have throughout the whole year, but I can get that information for you.
Yeah, and Jennifer, I think different students have different roles too. So there's like an HR specialization, there's a like frontline specialization, all that good stuff. So it's pretty differentiated as well.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to reports and still with Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you. So this evening, the student data report is on multilingual learners in Carmel Clay Schools. And so many, what, basically what we are talking about is our students, they're gaining proficiency in multiple languages. You may have heard it referred to E N L., English as a new language, or E S L., English as a second language, or dual language, or E L L., English Language Learners. There's all kinds of acronyms, but it's basically, we're looking at students that are gaining that proficiency in multiple languages. And some of our students actually know more than just two languages. They might know three or four different languages as well. And so having our students that are multi-language learners is just such a privilege to have in Carmel Clay Schools. And one of the reasons why is because it really just, that diverse linguistic and cultural diversity that brings for our multi-language learners really brings that whole set of assets that enriches the experiences for all of our students. And that's a very exciting thing. And as you can see, we have currently, we have thirteen hundred multilingual learners and representing a hundred and eleven different languages. So it is quite diverse in Carmel Clay Schools. That diversity is just very exciting for our students, for our teachers and for our entire community. So one of, you know, the pieces people always ask is, well, what's the languages that are spoken most other than English? And so as you can see here are the top ten languages other than English that are spoken. And we have about three point eight percent of our students that speak a language other than English is Spanish and then followed by Mandarin. So you can see there's those top ten languages, not one that is much, much higher than another, but Spanish, Mandarin are those top two pieces there, closely followed by Arabic. And so those are their languages, just as mattering, as we said, we have a hundred and eleven languages. And it's really interesting, sometimes we'll have, you know, requests that comes in for a new English dictionary that has the language and we'll have to look at, sometimes we'll get languages that, like, what language is that and where is that? And we'll have to look that up because we do have quite a variety of languages. And so making sure that we have the resources for the students that have the English language dictionaries as well. So when we look at our English learners, we're looking for their English language proficiency levels. So we have students, when they, when they enroll in Carmel Clay Schools, our parents fill out a language, home language survey. And on that, and this is all students that enroll in Carmel Clay Schools, all students that actually enroll in any school across the state of Indiana. They're required to fill out the home language survey. And in the home language survey, there's three questions they ask is what language, what's the native language of the student? What language is spoken most often by the student and what language is spoken by the student at home? If the answer to any of those questions is something other than English, then we administer the WIDA screening assessment where required. And the WIDA screening... And the WIDA screening really looks at, it's screening their proficiency for English language. And what WIDA, people often ask, what does WIDA stand for? Well, WIDA is actually a consortium. It's a consortium of many, forty-one state departments of ed's that work with WIDA, where they provide tools, they provide training, they provide assessments for supporting our language learners. And WIDA actually stands for the, when they originated the WIDA first original grant, it was the first three states that were named on the grant, which was Wisconsin, Delaware, and Arkansas. Now, it's just, it's the terminology for that consortium of states. A lot of people say, what's WIDA? So we administer the WIDA screening, and that WIDA screening is looking at their proficiency in speaking, listening, reading, and as well as writing. And so the students receive a composite score for their language proficiency. And that composite score is anywhere between a one, which would be at the entering level, all the way to a six or a reaching level. So our students that score at a five or a six, that is where our, that's our fluent English proficient students. These are students that speak English fluently as well as possibly their native language. But those students do not, are not provided support because they don't need the support. Our students that are at a level one all the way through a level four, they, those students do receive additional English language support. So our students from a level one to a four point nine, sometimes you might hear the term, our LEP students are our limited English proficient students. Those are students that are still working towards that proficiency. And so as we provide that support for our students, and we'll talk in just a bit about what that programming looks like. But as we provide that support for our students, we're looking at over time that they are gaining that proficiency. Typically, what we would like to see is one year's growth on proficiency throughout the year. So if a student comes in and they score at a level one, we would like to see them get to a level five in five years' time. Because it does take time to truly gain that English proficiency where not only do you have the social language, where you can talk with your friends, where you can, you know, order your dinner out at a restaurant, all of those pieces, but you have the academic language as well, where you can learn by reading and writing in your coursework in English, understanding the terms like analyze, those terms that we use in the academic language. So to be truly proficient, you need to have both of those areas. And that, that does take time over time that we're learning for our students. But we do typically want to look for our students to gain at least one level. Many of our students progress much faster than that for the level. So each year, for all of our limited English proficient students, we are required to give the WIDA access, which is, we are actually finishing that up this week. We have a month-long window where the students, any student that is a level one through four point nine are required to take the WIDA access, which is a longer version than the screener, and it's looking at their growth and proficiency over time. And it is scoring the same areas of reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and it comes up with a composite score. Then we use that information to continue to program for the students, where sometimes we might have students that are very strong in speaking and listening, but then we need to continue to work on the reading part or on the writing part of those pieces. And so we use that information to continue to program, and then we're looking for growth over time. Once the students achieve that level of a level five, then they are still in the program. There's still our multilingual programs where we have two years where we continue to monitor the students to make sure that they truly are proficient and they stay at that level five or six in their language. So it is a long area of support, but we want to make sure that our students are truly proficient and they're getting the services that they need. So as we look at our multilingual learners and our limited English proficient learners, so this graph is just showing the increase in the number of students that we have in the multilingual LEP. So the number of students over the years that have increased, so the change in LEP students from the previous year. So you can see, we have quite a jump. We have twenty-six percent more students this year that are in level one through four point nine than we did last year. So we have quite a jump. And then this next chart, not only we have a jump from year to year, this year is an anomaly where we're having quite a change from July, from our students that were enrolled in July to our students from February fifteenth that are enrolled for our LEP students. So these are all of our limited English proficient students, learners. So from July tenth to twenty twenty-three, we had seven hundred and twenty-three students registered. As of last week, we have one thousand ninety-two students that are levels one through four point nine. That's a fifty-one percent increase over the course of the year, which has really, you know, as we're really looking at how are we stepping up those services? What does that programming need to look like? It's very difficult to add staff in the middle of the year as we're doing this, but that, you know, what are we doing? How are we thinking differently? Obviously, we can add staff through this next year, but how are we thinking differently? Because it's difficult when it's throughout the year. It's the same thing when they enroll in one classroom where they end up getting more and more students in one grade level, and it's very difficult to add staff through the year. But as you can see, not only is it an increase in the total number of levels one through four point nine, but the level one through one point nine, so those are students that come in and they speak very little English. They understand very little English. We have a hundred and thirty-two percent change. So from a hundred and twenty-eight students to two hundred and ninety-seven, that is a major change. And this is happening in all of our schools across the district. We're seeing this in every school across the district and that, that jump and that change. And how are we making sure that we're continuing to build the capacity in all of our teachers to provide those services? So the way we, the model that we look at for providing the services for our students is, we have, it's called a content-based ESL. And basically, what that means is our goal is to have proficiency in English and at the same time focusing on the learner, the content knowledge, and the skills for our students, both at the same time. And it's in an all-English setting. Many people, you know, are misunderstanding, think, oh, we just, you know, translate it all into their native language. Our, our goal is to teach them to speak English while teaching them the math concepts at the same time. And just translating it into their native language is not going to help them pick up their, the English language pieces. So instead, we use scaffolding, we use supports that we put into place. You might use multiple modes of communicating with the students and having the students communicate their learning back to the teacher and to other students. For example, you, you know, if a student, the assignment in the classroom might be to write a three paragraph essay on this. A student that is a multilanguage learner, that student might share their learning about the content or what have you that they're sharing. And they might do it where they might do it orally, where they share with the teacher their learning. Or they might do it between orally and also in pictures, or orally written and in pictures. So they're using multi modes to show their learning. And then also, we're using a lot of different varieties of techniques to support their learning in that English development, because we need to do it at the same time. The other piece with, we want to make sure that our students have, especially for like our level one students coming in, we want to make sure, do they have the language that can communicate their needs? That's the first piece, the first, you know, I need to see the nurse, or this is what I want for lunch, or I need to use the restroom. We need, we teach them those, we sometimes call that the newcomer, where we're teaching them their, their basic needs of making sure that they learn that language. But at the same time, how are they communicating with their peers in the classroom? How are they collaborating with their peers in the classroom? And it's not just through, you know, in, at first, they might do some, a lot will have their phone, where they might translate it into their phone, where they can read it. But we need to move away from that quickly so that they're picking up the English language. They want to make, we want to make sure that they're relying on the English language to learn that speaking and listening piece. And so we want to make sure that we support them in those scaffolds and that all of our students, because it's not where we have students that come in, they come in at all different levels, and they're coming in with all different languages at different grade levels. So you can't just come in and say, okay, now you're in the English, the ESL class, and you're going to learn all of your instruction in the ESL class. The students are in the regular classes, so we need to make sure that we're supporting our teachers in those regular classrooms on how do we support teachers in making sure that they can meet the needs of their students. So we do have MLL teachers that provide direct support to our students as well as provide supports in the classrooms with our teachers. So in some classrooms, they might be doing some team teaching. Like one of our middle schools where we have the MLL teacher that pushes into the classroom during language arts time. We have another class where the students are learning their language arts in a smaller MLL class. At the high school, we also have E N L specific. They're English, they're teaching them specifically English. And that's an elective that we have. That's something that we're looking at as well to possibly add as an elective for our middle school students as well. Because as you can imagine, coming in and speaking no English as a kindergarten student, where it is very language-rich and the students are all learning together, our, that's the best time to come because the students have that and that they're moving very quickly, developing their oral language, developing, they're all learning to read together as compared to coming in as a sophomore and speaking no English. And making sure you have all the credits to graduate, that, you need to sometimes accelerate that even faster. So really looking at what are the needs of all of our students? And as we continue to provide, how can we better provide those resources? That is a continuing piece that we continue to look at, and we evaluate that to provide those. Because how do we make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students? And this year, it was even, we had even a larger onslaught of our students. And so we want to make sure that we're getting them the very best resources so that they can be successful. And then, as I said, it's just such a, an honor to have our students that bring so many different assets to the classroom, that we're excited to have them and we're excited to continue our learning together for our students. So with that, what questions might you have?
Jennifer?
I was actually just heard a story from one of these such families today where their children speak Vietnamese, and so they're taking Spanish and learning how to count to ten in Spanish, but their parent mentioned they don't even know how to count to ten in English yet. And so not only are they under that type of stress, they, their social customs of what they participate in school are a lot different. And so they're trying to navigate that as well. So in, by these, the parents recounting students, girl students in Vietnam don't participate in sports. And so here, where it's so sports-centric, it's very hard for them to find their way. So what type of supports do we offer to them in terms of their psychological development?
Yes, yes, great point. And so one of the things to, as our students come with those very different backgrounds, that's why it's so important to get to know our students, to understand what backgrounds they're, they're coming from and to provide what supports we can provide for the, our students. So one of the pieces, as we look at our social workers, many of our schools offer, they have MLL nights for families that are specific for our multilanguage learners. We also have for the families, our public library has offered conversational English for adults to learn that. And we have lots of other supports in place through different churches throughout the community, through our youth assistance of, you know, making sure we're tying those supports together. Also with our families of how are we making those personal connections, not only with our students and the teachers, but with our PTOs? For example, reaching out and specifically reaching out and welcoming some of our new multilanguage families to come and having a personal touch with some of our PTOs to connect them to the school. Because sometimes that can be very intimidating to do that. And so building those connections throughout for our families, and those are lots of different supports that we have. But it is really important to understand the, the students and the backgrounds that they're bringing because they have lots of different ways of knowing, lots of different ways of learning, but they also have different cultural backgrounds that may not be very specific to what it appears is in Carmel Clay Schools and helping them to navigate that. And so that is a piece.
Other question. So then, these thirteen hundred students, especially those that are the one to four point nine, are they then exempted or waived from taking the academic, they're not the academic, the progress test, the?
No. I learned, no. Our students that are levels one through four point nine are all required to take ILEARN. They're required to take IREAD. They're retired, they're required to take the school day SAT. They can take those with accommodations, but they're, they are required to take those. And it is very difficult, especially when you're thinking about a level one or a level two student that starts beginning English and that you have to give them the opportunity. And so as you think about looking at, you know, those testing, one of the pieces that we do look at is once they do move into proficiencies into a four or five, we do want to see, are they, they may not be at the proficient level on ILEARN or on, but they, are they making gains in their proficiency? And so we're, we're, we look at each individual student on that, are they making gains in that area? But they are required to take those tests, and many times, they become, their, their score is not proficient. I mean, because imagine if you went to Japan and you spoke none of the language and you were required to take a reading test. You're probably not going to pass it. So.
Greg?
Yeah, this, uh, thank you for the report. This is really enlightening. It seems like it's, it's got to have a tremendous impact on the schools. And you mentioned that all the schools are seeing this change, also all fifteen schools are being impacted to different levels. Would you say, you know, like that, you had a screen that showed the top ten languages. Do you know, was, is one of those languages the ones we're seeing the most change? You know, like you showed that we had a, you know, in seven months, we, we had an increase of a hundred and sixty-nine, level one to one point nine, coming in, so in seven months. Is that primarily like one language or is that scattered about, too?
So it's, it is scattered. So most of our students that are coming in that, for this change this year, about thirty-seven percent of the students that are coming in, they're coming from schools in the United States. So it's all different languages. The next highest, they're coming from Venezuela. So our newest students, so it would, so the next highest would be Spanish. But the first, where, where were they coming from? They're coming from all over the United States. And they're, they've been in the United States, and so it's lots and lots of different languages. But then the second highest would be Spanish.
Okay. You answered that one. The, you mentioned, I think, the high school actually has like a teacher that would teach these children English. And that's just their goal is not to teach them English literature, but to teach them the language?
Yes, it's a, it's an elective. So they still have their regular English class, which they're learning English literature while learning English. But in addition to that, they have an elective, so they have a course that's called, we have, it's E N L one all the way through E N L six. And so it's different levels of English as a new language. So speaking, teaching them the language specifically in that course. Yes.
It just seems like, you know, thinking like a math, for example, if, if a child comes in, doesn't, is a level one and comes into a middle school math class, for example, they may not even be at the right level of knowing math, I suppose. But much, you know, in addition to that problem, they don't speak the language. So how, how would a teacher be able to help that child in a classroom with thirty or thirty-five kids trying to all learn math, and then they've got one that is just struggling? Does it make sense to, wouldn't it make better sense to have them go to some kind of crash course in English before they, you put them in algebra?
So, so what, so I was thinking, you know, in your example, in middle school, as they come in and they're maybe at a class with thirty students in the class, where the first important piece is to understand, what, what is it that they know in their? piece is to understand, what is it that they know in their, the standards that they know in math? And not to assume that they don't know the math, they don't know, we know they don't know the language, but we don't assume that they don't know the math. Because many times, many of our students, they're coming from different schools around the world, and they're, have very similar instruction in math. So the first thing is to really understand the student, and how do we get at that? And math is one of the pieces where we can help them to, you know, are we looking at the numbers? Are we using the pictures, the words? You know, that's one of the more, the easier one than to come in and maybe do something with social studies. So really getting to know, where are the students? What is their level in math with the language? And then how do we support that student? It's just like, how do, you know, we have, when we have 30 students in a classroom, they all have different needs. How do we support our students that might, you know, not speak English? So here's, when we're teaching a concept in math, let's say we're teaching a concept of ratios in middle school math, here, you know, here's the learning target. Now, the student that is, has limited English proficiency, how they might show their learning might look very differently. The way you may interact with the students and show them the problems, using more pictures in the problems, or using more gestures or words, that may be a way to help them to understand how you're teaching that ratio piece. So it is a, it is difficult to do, but it's not just to say, we're, to make the assumption that all level one students would be put into this classroom here, because they don't necessarily have all of the same needs. And as they start to pick up the language and pick up the, their trajectory goes much quicker than maybe a student is struggling with the concepts on those pieces. So it is, it is an art of how are you providing those supports? So how do we provide those push-in supports with our multi-language learner teachers? How do we provide that with instructional assistants in the classroom? And how do we have our teachers work together, where they do that planning together with that language teacher as well on that team? Because it's not just in math, but it's the students that are on those teams. And how do we build those capacities for our teachers to understand how do we meet their needs? And that's an ongoing piece.
You know, looking at these numbers and the rate of increase is alarming in the impact to the school and the resources, the challenges you already have with getting the right balance of teachers at the right schools at the right time, based on, you know, when the new school year comes in and all these changes. And then suddenly, we're seeing like a 132% increase in seven months. So from summer of 2023 to this month, middle of this month, we went up 132%, just in the type, the level one. Were we aware these kinds of demographic changes were coming in? Or do we, do they just all of a sudden appear at the doors?
I mean, no, there was nothing that just, they enroll, I mean, we take, we're a public school, so we, anybody that comes, we enroll them in schools.
So no one's coming saying that, hey, you know?
No.
Do we get any, any kind of federal funds for, like, you know, I would think from a resource planning perspective, you would want, you would want to have maybe some more English language teaching teachers at every school, or at certain schools, or it does seem like it would be a tremendous impact. So, but we're not getting any funding, special funding for MLLs?
Yes, we do. We get two different funding streams for our multi-language learners. So federal funds, we, it's the Title III grant, which is based on our multi-language learners. That grant is a much smaller grant, those federal funds, and it's used more to provide the professional development, to provide the support for our students. Then we have a state grant, which is called NESP, which is the Non-English Speaking Grant. That grant is a much larger grant, and it's, all of it is based on the number of MLL learners that we have. So with this increase, this next year, we will actually receive a much greater amount of money to help support those students. So yes, we do receive two different funding streams specifically for our MLL students, which is a good thing, and that's how we support having those services in place.
Okay, so Greg, I would like to know a little bit more about the why behind your concern, because I most certainly want to, I most certainly want to ensure that we're not inferring that non-native English-speaking students would be taxing on our system or our educators. I just want to make sure that's clear. We're not inferring that.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for asking that. I would not, I don't think I've said anything that would infer that. My concern is, is there someone talking now? Okay, that's very distracting, Madam President. I don't know if you want to continue with that, but it's very, very distracting. Okay. It just seems that, from a resource planning perspective, that I want to make sure that, you know, if we need monies or something, that the board can help with that challenge. I mean, I'm not, you know, we have these children coming in, they're children like anyone else's children, they have family, they have needs, and we need to take care of them. So yeah, please, thanks for asking that question, but my concern is, do we, what can we do to help with, you know, help dealing with this? It's got to be a huge challenge. I mean, the numbers you're showing are the percentages, and what's to say that in another seven months, we'll see an increasing number? And, you know, so that's why I'm asking these questions, like, do we know if we're, if it's leveling off? Do we, are the state funds and the federal funds timely enough?
Before we get to that, can we just, can we just clarify that? It's, I'm sorry, with everything that's been shared so far, I wasn't, I wasn't under the impression that we had this huge influx of non-native speaking students that we needed to address? Can we, can we just clarify that there's, is that a?
So this year, it is unique that we have a larger number of students that have come that is not as typical. So as you can see, kind of our, from year to year, the change over years, we've increased quite a bit this year, but for this year, we have, we do have a larger number of students. And one of the things too, that I would say is, yes, will the funding follow that? Yes, it will. The other piece too, is the Carmel Clay Schools, one of the things that we do, and we do really well, is we continue to get better and better, and we continue to look at our programming, we continue to evaluate that programming, we continue to look at what are those best practices out there, and we provide that professional development for our teachers to be able to be responsive to the needs of all of our students. And that is a piece that we do, we do a really good job of that whole program evaluation cycle. So when we're looking at how are we meeting the needs of our students, our students that are limited English proficiency, and we look at our math programming, and we are providing professional development in math and helping students to understand conceptual and procedural fluency, we're also looking at how are we specifically helping our limited English-proficient students understand conceptual and procedural fluency? I mean, that's an ongoing piece. When we look at our literacy programming and providing that professional development, we continue, we look at all of our learners, so it's not just our limited English-proficient students, but it's our students that might need more time in learning literacy skills. That is a piece so that we can be responsive. So when we do see gains like this, we are able to be responsive with that. And then what it might mean as we look through this next year is we may need to add additional staff for our multi-language learners, so we can have additional supports for our students, which is a good thing. And the other piece too, is, you know, as I started, this is really, having our students that are very diverse, that brings that diversity to our classrooms, to our entire community, and having those assets, because our students come in with varying backgrounds that can really add to the very positive nature of students learning from each other. They come in, the other piece that too, that, one of the assets that they have that a student is compared to a person like me that only speaks one language, even though I am trying to learn Arabic right now, which is very challenging, I have to say. But one of the things is that flexible brain, because a dual-language learner is constantly, they may be constantly translating in their head the other language, and they're going back and forth. Sometimes they might, especially in the beginning, they might talk in, with both languages, but they're constantly going back and forth, and that's that flexible thinking that really helps to grow those dendrites, and that's a really positive piece, as our language learners are really learning that language. They get, they already have that flexibility and how they can add those, and those different ways of thinking and the problem-solving for all of our students. And that's the piece that's so exciting, that they really add to that classroom community.
That's great perspective, because I think about the total population of the Carmel Clay Schools system, and I wonder what this 203 students that are, I think that 26% make up that change, the overall impact on the number of, how do I say this, in the diverse population, right? And I, being a minority in this community and having students that are a minority in this, in the school system, I think those that are a minority would appreciate, would appreciate having more diversity in the student population. And then I think about those other students that are already there, looking for a community to connect to, as you brought up earlier, and how this is helping that community. So I'm grateful for that, and I want to highlight on that. And the last piece that I'll share is, as this country becomes more diverse, businesses become more diverse, and the customer base that we are, in essence, educating students to be able to support, this is enabling students to be ready to migrate into a more diverse population than what they experience. So I just want to make sure that we highlight that and hammer in on that as we're asking questions.
Yeah, and it is very important, as you say, to continue with their native language and continue developing their native language as they learn English, and not to lose that native language, because to truly be bilingual, two languages is giving somebody a leg up on others. Katie?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a little commentary. In fifth grade, my son had the opportunity of, in a class, I think, I believe they had two students who were like, I would, I don't know, I'm guessing, like level one Arabic, I mean, coming in. And it was so amazing to see what those, it was two students in the class, what they brought to the class. My son would come home and he would share, you know, these games that they would learn on recess and the things, and so like to the point that was shared. It was, it just added this amazing element to the class of, you know, they would learn these phrases and the holidays and the things that they would, and like the playground games. It was just really neat to be able to share, and I thought it was really great for like the other students, like you said, like the entire population, to be able to learn different things outside of themselves. So I thought that was, you know, not a really great way. I also really liked, and it can always happen, but in this particular class, they had two students who spoke the same language, and they were able to put them together. So it was like they had a buddy. So even though like they were, you know, one of 25, that at least had each other, which I know is not always an option, but I thought that that was really great, so that they could like at least have that one person, so.
And as much as possible, we try to at least have them, to have a buddy, or especially a newcomer, where we can add them to a classroom where they have another person that might speak their language, because that is a welcome. I mean, imagine if you're all day long, you're trying to keep up with the English, you need a little downtime too, to be able to relax.
Can you go back, can you go back to that slide that had the breakdown of the improvements from, what, like 1.0 to 4.9? So thank you so much for making sure we have resources that are intentionally devoted to this effort, because as I was looking at these stats, the thing that came to mind for me was, how do we create more opportunities for our diverse students to be in AP classes? We need this kind of intentional support so that they are able to take advantage of that, and they're able to apply to scholarships and different opportunities. Like, this is just really, really important, so thank you.
And we do have, you know, many of our students, especially in our IB courses, many of our limited English-proficient students are taking our IB courses as well, that, because many of them come from, they might have come from an IB school in another country, and then they continue, they're able to continue that coursework because we have that same diploma piece. So that's a great piece to have those higher, those rigorous, because we don't change the rigor, it's just how do we help them to learn the language, and how do we help them share their learning in other ways until they have the full grasp of the language?
Yeah, so just one, one last comment and question. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention and having the numbers, so we can really understand the impact. And I think everyone on the board would be, you know, certainly willing to do whatever we can to help, you know, assimilate in these kids and get them what they need. And, you know, just so people know, my background is, I'm from, I used to work in East Los Angeles, and one of my last jobs was in international sales, and I traveled to every continent several times, and I love diversity, I love different cultures, it's just fascinating. So I, I'm sure, you know, it brings a lot of excitement in the rooms. I just want to make sure that we are taking care of the kids. So my question would be, my last question would be this, do you, do you feel the teachers are at this point feeling they have enough resources to be able to continue doing the successful teaching they're able to do? Are they okay, generally speaking?
Well, I would say, you know, it's, it's always, we always need more resources, the piece, but we're always looking at how do we continue to build our own efficacy, our teacher efficacy, on meeting the needs of our students? And, you know, it's a process. It's, you know, we have some, I would say, some teachers, yes, they feel that way, other teachers feel like they might need even more. And so we're making sure that we're being responsive to the needs of our teachers, and how do we do that? Yeah.
Right, thank you.
I had a few quick questions, I promise, quick. I was just wondering, you said that schools or in classrooms have access to the multilingual learner teachers. Does each school have a teacher, or how does that work?
So it depends on the school, and it depends on the number of multilingual learners. Some schools have multiple teachers, some schools have a teacher, like that is only there for part of the week or part of the day. So it just depends on the number of multilingual learners in each of the schools. But they all, every school does have at least one teacher, it's just, some of them only might only have a teacher maybe half the time.
That makes sense. And then, so seeing this increase this year, I know probably you're hard at work trying to prepare for next year to make sure that the teachers are supported?
Correct. Like, one of the adjustments that we needed to make for our teachers, that we're sharing between buildings with some of the increase where we had more students come in, we actually changed the amount of time they were at that building to provide that support. We kind of switched some buildings around to be able to get more support at the certain buildings for this year. But then next year, we'll be looking at again, where are the students, and then where do the supports need to follow those students?
Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next is our monthly financial update, and Mr. McMichael will give us more information on that.
There you go. Okay, well, this is the first month, so maybe a brief report, but starting with the education operating referendum and the rainy day funds, I'll just go to the bottom and you'll see our, because our cash balance is quite a bit higher than it was last year, and I'll tell you the reason why. Last year, it was 9.5 million, this year it's 14.6. Two reasons primarily. This past year, we transferred money from, or into the rainy day fund, so that's included in this balance, that's contributing to it. And then also, the conversation we had earlier about transferring operational expenses to the operations fund. And, but the, so we've transferred the expenses, so the expenses have lowered in this report as compared to last year. Last year had those operational expenses in it, and this year it doesn't, but we have not transferred the revenue, because we'll do a revenue transfer probably twice a year. And so in the meantime, all the revenue is here, but the expenses went down. And so on $17 million, you know, per month, that's, you know, that's a chunk of change. So, so this is, you need to understand that, or this, the comparison would mislead you. So we are up a bit, when you factor that, those things in, we're still up, which we expect to be up, because the budget's up. And so as the budget goes up, our cash balance, we want our cash balance to go up kind of accordingly, because we really kind of look at it as a percentage. We look at the dollars certainly, but we talk a lot about minimum of 8% and moving it more toward about 12%. So, so that's, that's the report there, and then... And then, um, the operations fund, it's, it's a bit reversed. We're, we should, uh, this, this month we're at one point four million and last year you can see it was two point two. Again, it, it's harder to compare that be- because the expenses vary more in here because it has lots of things other than just souring benefits. But also we, that, that transfer from this fund to the rainy day fund reduces the revenue, starts out by reducing the revenue as compared to what it would've been had we not made the transfer. So, so you got a couple of things going on there. So you, you really can't take much away from comparing the operation fund because it, it can vary quite a bit from year to year. And then you can see here that the, um, the rainy day fund's now up to about almost four point seven million. And, uh, the question was asked, we do have a, we, a little bit of expense here, sixteen thousand dollars. And that's where we're, um, we're funding the, uh, the new, um, evaluation program for teachers. And that, and that's a process over more than one year. And so that, so there'll be, be expenses from time to time as it relates to the transitioning to that new program. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have no questions on the monthly report.
Oh, come on.
I guess I could come up with one, the, so.
There's five buckets and.
As Louise said earlier, it is seventy degrees outside.
Oh, now there's only two buckets, sorry. I'm getting coached here and I need it.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Uh, next we have Mrs. Browning presenting the school board governance norms.
Yeah, so, um, a little background, a little, uh, a little background on this document. So this is a document that I created in twenty twenty-two. Um, it was really just something where our pol-, we are guided by our policies and our bylaws. But there's a, there's a lot of things about just the way that we do things that aren't reflected in those. Or I just wanted, or we, we have questions about, um, and would want to, so I wanted to provide a document to the board that provided a little bit more information about the day-to-day operating type, the things that are normal, what's normal in our school board governance. So I created this document, um, I did provide this to the Indiana School Board Association in November of twenty twenty-two to review, to make sure that I was on the right page as far as what I was saying that we did and whatnot. Um, they thought this was great, it was actually something that they thought that they would recommend to other boards to be able to do. Um, it was approved by the Board of Trustees on November twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. Um, and it's con- stayed consistent since then. Um, as I, um, continued to work with transitioning, um, things as, by the, as the current, as the former board president over to Kristen, I wanted to make sure that I reviewed this document and I made sure that it was updated in order to turn over. Um, so I wanted to present to the board two changes, um, that I did add. The first one, um, is at the top where, um, going through, um, underneath the purpose of this document, I added the sentence, "This document is under the direction of the board president and will be reviewed annually, any changes will be brought before the board." So that's a sentence that I added, just kind of like ownership of who owns the document. Um, and so, and then any changes will be brought to the board. The other document is a change that, um, we have, has already occurred, but I just wanted it to be documented and that is regarding policy. So, um, a few years ago, we used to have, um, board committees that worked, like we'd have a policy committee that was changed, I believe, two years ago. But I wanted the document to reflect our current practice. So that section now reads, "This liaison position is under Dr. Amy Dudley's direction, Assistant Superintendent. At our January reorganization meeting, we will appoint two school board members to serve in this capacity. This liaison will communicate with the administration and our legal counsel to prepare for the board presentation of policies. The liaisons have no decision-making authority." So that's just, the paragraph itself is updated, everything else is consistent. This document, um, those two changes will be updated and then this whole entire document will be updated on our board website under the About the Board section. So those are the two changes that I made to align with our current practices. Is there any questions?
Yes, I do have a, a question on it. And, um, one thing I like about it is you do bring a lot of various elements of records and things, the principles and things. It makes it easy during the onboarding process, so I, I appreciate that. A specific question I have though is it does state that the Carmel Clay School Board does not utilize board committees. And it references bylaw zero one fifty-five, but if you read zero one fifty-five, when I read that, it says, it describes how committees come about and kind of how they're governed and things. So it's, it's inconsistent with the bylaw? Can you explain that?
Yeah, so I quoted the bylaw because the bylaw talks about how we can use committees, how they're set up. But what the point of the nor-, the document says is that we don't actually utilize it. So we have a bylaw that allows us to have them and it allow, and kind of outlines what we do if we want to, but we don't have any. So I just made it clear in the norms that we don't utilize it. So we have a policy if we wanted to, but we just don't.
Is there a reason why we don't use committees?
No, I mean, we just haven't.
Is there a rea- reason why we must?
Yeah, I just don't think that it's come before as a need that we needed to do.
Just, just looking across the other local districts, they, they all do use committees. And we've, we've talked, some of us about having like a budget finance committee. And a couple of months ago, I'd mentioned that I think it would be helpful if we had a committee like on library materials. I think it's a controversial thing, I think we could maybe had some working sessions, we could work through that. So I, I would like to see us use, I don't know if this overrules the fact that if this says we, you know, if we approve this document, I guess I would read it that we cannot have committees.
No, so this is not a binding document. So this is really just a what is our current processes and procedures? This has no holding un- in an opposition to our policies and bylaws. Our policies and bylaws are the rules that we govern by. This is just a document that outlines like what is our current practice? So it's saying that we don't utilize them because at this time that we don't. Um, on my time on the board, the reason that we have not elected to do committees is because, um, talking about our communication guidelines, what one board member knows, all board members know. And so we feel that information that is shared, we want all of the board members to have the same information. And when you involved in committees, then the person on that committee is aware of the information and not the fellow board members. So we really want to make sure that we all have the same information and we're all presented with the same information. And that's why we asked Dr. Beresford to make sure that when he shares information, it's shared with all of us and not a select amount. And we do have board appointments and different things and those are outlined, um, in the norm document and our board policies. But, but, so that's just some historical information about why we haven't used them in the past. Does that help?
I guess it does. So if, if we wanted to have, let's just say as an example, a budget committee, we could.
Yeah, so.
Just do it, right? This doesn't.
Nope, it doesn't, no, absolutely. So if the board as a majority wanted to set, set a committee, it would go, come through like any other action item where if the, a majority would be presented, it would go to the president to add it if a majority has a, any, like any board item. If, if the, if the majority of the board would like it to be added to an agenda, it will be set up at an agenda meeting. It'll come back to the board and then it'll be a second motion vote in order to do that. So this, this particular document doesn't interfere with any of the things, it just talks about what we currently are doing.
So it's just a current practice?
Exactly.
It's not a binding.
It's not binding whatsoever.
So, so if I wanted to recommend we have a budget committee?
Yep, so you would just talk to, um, your fellow board members, like you need to make sure that you would do it like individually because we can't make any decisions as a group. And then if you get enough interest, then you would present that to Kristen, who would add that to a gen-, an agenda meeting. And then that would be brought up to the board for, um, discussion and vote.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Tell me more, I was trying to find this, um, statement. Uh, you, you highlighted it a minute ago, a minute ago.
Yeah, yeah.
The page about, um, the board president and.
That's underneath the, um, purpose of this document.
Yeah, um, hold on.
And it's, it, this is the new update, so I don't know if it's what you're list-, it's like, I'll show you, I, well, I, on my screen, it's right here. It's the sentence at the bottom of the paragraph.
Yeah, um, any change at the bottom, okay. Yeah, it's under the direction of the board, can you say more about what that means? So under the direction of the board president, what, what does that mean? Like they, um.
Well, I, so I created the document, so then it would be for Kristen to review it to make sure that nothing has changed. And then she, if she wants to make a change on the document, then she just shares it with the rest of you.
Got it. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if I agree with it. I think, uh, you all know me that by nature I'm pretty democratic, like I, I, I don't love the idea of any kind of feel of authoritarian. So I'm just trying to make sure that if, if the other people on the board think that something needs to change, the board president doesn't have greater weight than one other individual.
I think you're just saying that the board president is, is the one that makes the changes on the documents.
Facilitates or brings it to the team, you know what I mean? Facilitates or brings it to the team is just.
So I could, I could change it, like maybe this document is under the facilitation of the board president.
You know what I mean? That would make me feel better.
That works fine for me.
Okay.
Like I said, it's a, it's a document that's a non-binding like collection of.
Yeah.
Here's what we do. And then, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really hold any weight, but at the same time, I do think it needs ownership. I think the original one, we came up with the concept because the board president is the spokesperson for the board and it's kind of over like board communication, so to speak, that it, like that made the most sense.
Yeah, I get the why behind it, I just think we could maybe just tweak the wording a little bit.
I think the verbiage can easily be changed just to make sure that it looks more, like you said, more democratic and the board's represented.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm okay.
With our, just for everybody's knowledge, with, uh, evaluation of the superintendent, right? We have the vice president that helps kind of get the ball rolling, but everybody gives input. I just want to make sure the spirit is the same for the norms, that's all.
I, I love it. So I can, do you want to change, um, under the direction to like, this document is facilitated by the.
Yeah, under the facilitation of, right?
Or under the facilitation of.
Yeah, that's it, it's a minor tweak.
Easy to use.
Yeah, minor tweak there.
Yeah. Get to make the change.
Couple grammar things I'll.
So, um, I can, I can make the change and then I'll just hand it over as that one change.
Dr. B says the custodian of the document.
Yeah, but that, everything else is the same except for the policy paragraph that I read.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So do we vote on this at some point?
Nope, because it's not a binding.
Because it's non-binding, it's just something that we, you know, but we do agree on it together that these are what we hold ourselves to.
It looked like it was approved last November, right after the election.
It was, it was voted on when we made it, like the existence of said document.
The existence of the document itself was voted on to, to have such document, but not the wording or the, the content of the document.
Yeah.
Yeah, as a, as a board member, um, I remember when I joined the board and I just felt like I kind of, I don't know. I got, um, voted into this, um, group and I didn't understand the norms. I didn't understand what was understood by other people, you know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly, that's why we created it.
So I appreciate that you put it in writing for us all to view and, and to align to and where we have questions, we can ask that. Um, just so it's not like one person says one thing, another person says another thing and you don't have the, a consistent, uh, understanding, that's all, so thank you.
And here's a great example, um, for the, the general public, um, is that we utilize a group email address and responses to the, the, and when we get an email, we all see it and, you know, we can, but the person who responds to the email, that's the board president. So that's not a policy, that's not a bylaw, but it's kind of what we normally have, we do. And so then that's notated in this document. So it's really just the day-to-day business-ish stuff that is not a hard and fast rule, but is what's the normal thing that we do. So those are the types of things that are allied in this document.
Sort of a living document that we kee-, that keeps track of how, how, the how-to of being on the board.
Um, and I think it's a great point is it doesn't distinguish change, it reports on changes that's already been voted on. So that's why it's not necessarily something where, you know, I don't think it needs to be voted on because it's things that's already, you're duplicating efforts. It's already things that have been decided and changed. But, um, anyway, I like the change of the facilitator, I think that that's great. Um, I'll make sure that that's updated and then this whole document will be updated. Um, it's already on there, but the new version will be updated on our website.
Could, could we add a little change too where it says that the Carmel Clay School Board does not utilize board committees? To phrase that more like you said, is we're not, our current practice is we don't use them, but we certainly could have them with the board.
Maybe the Carmel Clay School Board is currently not utilizing, like is currently, meaning we could, but we're not right now?
That'd be fun.
Okay, I can add that. Yeah.
It's just a point of clarification, is that it looks like, like it violates our own bylaw, but I don't think that's the intent, right?
Yeah, I'll add currently and I will add facilitating. Okay.
I really liked this discussion, this was nice.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, you're, you're still up though, so.
You're not done here.
You are not done. Uh, Mrs. Browning is going to present the legislative update to us.
Yes, so I have the privilege of being your legis- legislative liaison. Um, it has been a very busy session. Um, it is a considered the twenty twenty-four short session of the Indiana General Assembly. Um, I had the honor of participating in the Indiana School Board Association State House Day on February sixth, um, downtown, so that was really neat. Um, we were able to hear from the caucus leaders and also the education committee panel, um, just kind of what are things that are, um, very prominent and hot topics for them this year. Um, with any legislative session, it changes every single day. So this is, um, something where a couple of updates I'll provide to you tonight, um, tomorrow they could not exist. So that's something where, um, I know that we get lots of emails from, um, the Indiana School Board Association and things with different like updates of the current bills and everything. Um, once the session is over, I will make sure I report back, um, with that. So this, um, meetings are winding down. The, the Senate Education and Career Development Committee held, held its last meeting, um, this past Wednesday. The House Education Committee will meet again for one more time tomorrow. Bills have to pass out of the second chamber by March fourth in the House and March fifth in the Senate. And the short session must, and they're planning on it concluding by March fourteenth. So we are kind of toward the end of this, um, particular short session, they call it a short session because it's a non-budget session. Um, this year, seven hundred and fifty-two bills were introduced in the session. Um, we're definitely kind of winding down on those. Um, I do want to bring up, um, two of those. Um, the first one is Senate Bill One, which is, um, reading. Um, I want to kind of just talk a little bit about that. Um, the caucus leaders, um, on, for the Republican, um, side said that this is their number one focus this year, Senate Bill One, um, reading skills. So it requires schools to offer summer school courses for students who are not reading proficient of different things, providing a student. Um, it's really focused on the new science of reading curriculum that we have, um, lots of emphasis on that. The one thing that is of concern is that it requires the retention of, which means being held back, um, any student in third grade who does not get a passing score on I read. So if a student does not pass I read, they would be held back for the next year. Um, this is problematic in a few ways. Um, and so they're really working, um, to, I know that for, in particular, the Indiana School Board Association, um, is working to, um, clarify this language and also that the bill reads that this is in effect for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, meaning next year. So if a third grader does not pass I read next year, they will be held back for the entire grade. Um, which could then mean that you would have, I mean, it goes on that you could have nineteen, twenty-year-olds graduating, um, high school if it's for that. So that's one area of the plan to continue to watch on, so that's contin-, that's still in there. Um, the other one I will, um, bring up to you is the Senate Bill two one eleven, various education matters. Um, this bill required, um, the Department of Education to establish a civics program and protect, um, a proposed change to the starting date of formal bargaining to September, to October first. So this was a change that was recently where they wanted to push it, um, back a month. This actually was just, um, adopted to go back to our original date of September fifteenth. So that is not a change which we're very thankful for because we would like to start collective bargaining as soon as possible and not have to push it back. So that part of the bill has already been amended. Um, it also wants to, um, so that has changed. It allows school corporations to include internet safety in their curriculum, which I know that we already do. And the other area of it is it allows teachers to remove a disruptive student from the classroom for the remainder of the class period unless the student's behavior is attributed to an IEP or Section five oh four plan. So this law, um, allows a teacher to remove a disruptive student from his classroom. Um, the Indiana School Board, uh, testified in support of this bill. Um, it has passed out of committee and will now go to the House for a second reading. Um, there's, um, in, in reference to our legislative letter where we had the different updates, um, we talked, we did pinpoint that we wanted to address referendum language, school safety, regulatory relief, on my way pre-K and gap accounting. None of these things are really a point of topic in this session. The only thing I will say is that there is House Bill thirteen seventy- The only thing I will say is that there is House Bill 1376, which would like referendums to be on the ballot only on a general session, in a general or municipal, or municipal election, which is concerning because that would limit when schools, if needed to do a referendum, would have to wait until there's a presidential election or a mayoral election, which is hard because that interrupts things, too. So that's also something that is being watched on. Again, things are moving very fast. There's nothing currently that's on affecting education that is of a large red flag. Lots of things affecting us, but we also have to watch because, as we know, things at the last minute can be added to bills that we were not originally on the eye for, and I will just continue to update you with those as I can.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that. Our next report, we have Dr. Beresford presenting the superintendent's report.
All right, I'll try to get through this quick because I was told the weather's nice outside and to get you out as quick as possible. One thing I, and I shared with the board is I just keep reflecting on Dr. Dudley's report. 1,300 students representing 111 native languages, and really interesting languages from all over the world. I know there's some concerns about that number, but you have to remember that number of increase that we have is spread out over 16 buildings, or 15 buildings. So it's not, they're, they're all in one, you know, all the students that move in are in one school, but it is a significant number. But as I reflect on that, you know, I think about people from all over the world who come to Carmel, Indiana, and they come to our schools. And some who speak English fluently and some who speak little and no English at all. And I had the opportunity to go to Carmel Middle School last week, me and Jim Dandy and several service dogs from the district. They had a best friends' day, and as I was leaving, I had the opportunity to spend some time in the hallway with six, I'd call them MLL learners and multi-language learners, who were with their teacher, and they were learning words from their classroom assignments. They were working on like the vocabulary of the, of the class that they were in. And of course, I completely distracted them because they were more interested in petting Jim Dandy than, than their work at that point in time. But even in that exchange with those students, they were practicing their English, and, and they were telling, you know, and I was kind of working on my Spanish, because we were kind of asking each other words back and forth. And, but anyhow, you know, like, five of the students I could recognize were Spanish speakers, and then one, it was a language I couldn't, I couldn't figure out. I don't know why, exactly what it was, but he was learning, they were all learning, they were, he was learning, too. They were all learning just the words. And I think one of the strengths, and I don't know if the word's still used, is immersion. So when students are immersed into a language where they're, they aren't able to, you know, use their, their, you know, their, their home language, that they learn English faster, and that that curve goes up a lot quicker. And actually, the idea of having classes in their own language and then trying to teach English at the same time, it's actually, slows the whole process down. I think you kind of alluded to that in your report, Amy. But to me, it's, it's simply amazing that within months, these students will be speaking English. And, and you're right, they start, we start with the basics that you need to know to get through the first day of school. And I've been in the, the bus parking lot when a student got off the bus in middle school and had the look in their eyes because they're there, and they, and I'm, and I go up, and I'd say, "Do you speak English?" And then they look at me and go like this, and then we scoop them up and, and take him to our, our English, at that time, his English is a new language teacher, and, and just start the work right, right away then. But it does happen very quickly as far as the speaking part of it. Of course, reading and writing is a lot, is a little more, slower to learn, I guess. But it's simply amazing. And then they'll be writing in English, they'll be learning in a, in a language that they've never spoken. And to me, that's like a mini miracle, or maybe it's a bigger miracle. So a language they've never spoken, they start working in it. And it makes me really grateful to the special people we have on our team, and you listen to Amy talk about them, but they help students, and they open up a whole new world and a culture, which is us, to them. I'm also grateful because they also bring new language and a culture, and they open up a new world for our students that live here already. And so it's a really, really wonderful exchange there. And just, I'm grateful because we're off, we're really fortunate to have special people that really want to get in there and do that work with those kids and, and see that growth, and to see them starting to access, you know, another language and another culture and that sort of thing is really good. So I'll jump off that. I've been thinking about that for quite a while. Ever since you posted that report, I thought it was fantastic, and, just fantastic. So I wanted to share just a couple of things, and I'll, I'll go quicker, and I won't read all of that, so Kristen, you have to worry about it. I got to go to the Tech Hounds 868 robot reveal, and it is the coolest thing. If you guys get a chance, go to the, the Tech Hounds competition. They're all over the place all the time. But the robot challenge, every year, they get a big, thick book that tells them what the challenges are going to be and what the robots can do. And, and this year's challenge is they're, they're picking up these hoops that are about this big, and they're kind of like a spongy plastic, and so they just throw them on the ground. And, and the robot will pick it up off the ground, and then it aims at a QR code, and it doesn't matter where they are. And the computer is programmed to know the right angle, and it shoots it into this, into this hole and drops them in there. And it's crazy because the computer, the robot is reading the QR code at the target and shooting it in from all different places. Then they have another part of it where it goes over, it lifts up, pushes the ring, and drops it into a slot. And they have another one where the robot goes, and actually, the robot has to lift completely off the ground. Then it extends some more, and it pushes it into a, another, those are just some of those things that were challenges that the robots, and we'll bring, we're going to have a robotics work session so you guys can kind of see some of those in action, but it is just simply amazing. And so I'm looking forward to Tech Hounds robot season and to seeing some great things. Also, attended senior night for the boys' basketball team against Crispus Attucks. I think, I think they were ranked seventh or eighth in the state. I can't remember exactly which one. And once again, the unranked Greyhounds, who started out the season two and seven, won that game. And I think they've made, I think they've beaten like maybe four or five top 10 teams, maybe six, or maybe more, six or seven. And they, they beat the number-one team in the state on, you know, one game, and then like four days later, a new team was named number one, and then they beat them. And so this group has like grown like any, they've just grown together and really gelled, and, and they're just kind of, I think they're like a Hoosiers story. You know, they're kind of coming from nowhere, and I think they've established themselves as a team nobody wants to play in the sectional. And so they handed number-one Fishers their only loss of the season. They defeated number-two Lawrence North, who was number-one at the time. And then sectionals begin this Tuesday, tomorrow, and unfortunately, or fortunately, they're again going to play the number-one team in the state, which is Fishers again now. And so the question is, can they upset the number-one team in the state twice in a row? And win or lose, it's just been an incredible season for this group, and, you know, let's go Hoosiers, you know, let's, let's win one. So encourage everybody to go out and support the Hounds. I did attend, my wife and I attended the CHS Choral Showcase, which was, featured four of the choirs, and the last group was the acapella group, which is my favorite. They just, it's so, so good. But they had soloists that had done an audition to be, to win a, a scholarship to go to like a choral camp, or, or to take lessons and do different things to, to improve their, you know, their singing. And, and I tell you, these were like, there was like three freshmen and two sophomores and a junior. And so these freshmen went up there, and I thought, if I was standing on that stage with all these people watching, I would just fall off the stage, and they just belted it out. We have a, a trove of talent here in Carmel Clay Schools. And so kind of mixing the choirs up with the soloists was a very entertaining night. It was really good. So as I mentioned before, I won't do all that over about the show choir stuff, but I will let you know that the four competition choirs are going to perform a community night on Thursday, March the 14th at 7:00 PM. It's probably a hot ticket, so if you want one, I will get you one right away. But all of those show choir shows are going to be done for the community at Carmel High School, so mark that down on your calendar. And I already talked a little bit about Friend Day, Friend, you know, Friendly Friday with the dogs, Jim Dandy, Augie the Doggie from Clay Middle School, Sirius from Carmel Middle School. A lot of district dogs visited. We got, we went into classes for about 15, 20 minutes in different levels, and it was really fun to interact with the kids, and the teachers could build, you know, kind of lesson around that, and I got to talk to them a little bit about service dogs and some of the things that go on. Wanted to announce that this week is Culture of Care Week, and that's going to be all across the district, kind of originated at Carmel High School. And this year's theme is the Power of Yet. The book, we're using a children's book called The Power of Yeti, but it's, it's kind of an open mindset story about how if you face a struggle and you're trying to figure out a problem, you don't, it's to, when you have that moment when you say, "I can't do it," that if you add three letters, Y-E-T, it changes the whole dynamic. So it's not, "I can't do it," it's, "I can't do it yet." And, and that kind of, you know, that kind of mindset can get you through a lot of times when you're starting to struggle and having a difficult time with whatever the challenge. Soon comes the bell ringer, and I couldn't decide between two, so I'm having two bell ringers. So the first one is the Riley Dance Marathon. Our kids worked tirelessly for a year for that, and again, they were able to raise over a half a million dollars for Riley's Children's Hospital. They're the highest fundraising group, and that's like the student government. It's just the whole community of Carmel High School that really worked that and worked that. And so that's just amazing. So kudos to all the, everybody that participated and contributed to the, for the Riley, the Riley Dance-A-Thon. And, and it was just a wonderful experience. And then my bell ringer, bell ringer, is the Carmel High School State Championship Boys Swimming Team. And again, our Boys Swim and Dive Team competed in the state finals. They had advanced 26 out of a possible 27 swimmers, and, and all of, but one of those, I think, qualified for the finals the next day. And, and the boys scored the second-highest total of points in the history of Indiana swimming, and they won by the largest margin of victory ever in the history of swimming. And they're just a bunch of really phenomenal, fit kids, and they know how to move water. And so that's my report for tonight. Kudos to the Riley Dance Marathon folks and also to the championship boys' swimming team. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a couple upcoming meetings. Our next one will be Monday, March 11th, and that's our workshop session. And then we have one on Tuesday, so it's a different day. Tuesday, March 26th is for a regular board session. And then the Carmel Clay School's spring break will be April 1st through April 8th. And again, just to remind you, that's a little bit different this year because we are having that Monday off due to the eclipse that afternoon. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Any second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.